Yes, yes. So it's just us three here tonight. Yeah, just us three. So Jeff.
Um.
I'll tell you what, I have been sick. I got sick again. I'm not sick anymore. I just have a cough, a little bit of a cough. So I've been, like, today's been my first day out about and I'm just like, I hate to say it, but I'm just like, I'm not tired, but I'm, like, I'm tired, you know, like, I don't know, maybe kind of almost, I've been lazy since, what was it, Thursday, Wednesday night? But like, just kind of wiped out, if you will, you know what I mean, like, just dragging, you know what I mean? Yes. Yes. Well, we went, um...
I've taken five minutes.
I know, I know. You know, we went to a, a chamber retreat and a couple of those girls ended up getting sick. And, uh, I don't know, it was just, it was weird. Yeah.
I found out that I've been here for like three weeks.
Oh, no.
That's not contagious, is it?
Pneumonia? Yes, of course it is. Anytime, any, anytime you have green stuff in your lungs, you're contagious. That's, that means you're contagious, the green stuff, yeah.
That's good. I did not know that.
Yeah.
It's good to know.
Yeah. That's why you get antibiotics. That's why I get antibiotics. Yeah, I'm like, I cannot, I cannot. And I have plans, because I have been doing so much with that history, I had plans to take that Friday off the other, you know, four days ago. I was gonna take it off, go on France, just have a wild day, right? Yes, we were gonna go get Tocin, maybe go see a movie or whatever. Yeah. Yeah. And then, but, but the good part about it, it was a four-day weekend, which that means I didn't have to miss work, you know what I mean, like, it was like...
I had a whole day.
Yeah, I, you know, I didn't have like, well, I had, uh, the doctor gave me some cough syrup and then antibiotics and steroids. But steroids makes me, um, like, uh, what do you call them, amped up. Yeah, yes, they did, they did.
Matthew, Billy's brother, was like, this is near Christmas.
Yeah.
Christmas morning, that was crazy shit, I was like, oh, I'm gonna be...
Yeah, because you didn't want to get around with anybody.
Tom told, he wasn't supposed to be there.
Yeah. Yeah. And your wife?
Hi.
What do you think about those Niners? Yeah, you're a Niner fan?
Nobody wants, should ask about the Niners, right?
Oh, yeah, 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 well, they were terrible.
That wasn't a good game.
They were terrible from the first kick, anyway.
The Niners game?
Yeah.
I heard Sharon said, how about those Niners?
Well, Janine is a Niner fan, so obviously she doesn't...
Oh, is she?
So, anyway, but the whole game was terrible.
Yeah.
So she's into the, um, lambs and the goats and sales, she does all that with the four, her FFA.
Yeah.
So she was on her phone watching the, the sale, the big sale with her notepad and keep the tabs on everything and barely even watching the game. I called my mother not to come over, I'm like, it's really bad. Well, they were terrible the whole time.
All the whole time.
And then the entries, and poor Kiddles out, Kiddles done best. Kiddles is savage, but he wasn't, you know, playing, but it's too bad that they didn't at least have a little bit of a, you know, fun, like, too bad they didn't even, like, get a little bit of, you know...
Right, playtime.
Yeah, from, from the first kickoff.
Right.
I have a friend, she's a Seahawk fan, she goes to Crab Shoppino.
Oh, geez.
And I said, I cannot believe you're going to Crab Shoppino at the FES Hall when your game's on. She goes, they're putting it on the big TV for me. I'm like, oh, thank you. So I was texting her, texting her, I thought, oh, my God, it's crazy.
Oh, she was happy, I bet.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah. I didn't get it. They posted that they would deliver it to me. I didn't go because I was, but I didn't see that until yesterday.
Yeah, 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 I should... Yeah, I, I wish. I heard it was really good.
Oh, you were? Ooh, how was that? Was Steph Curry there? My boyfriend? Oh, I love him. I love him. I love him very much. Okay, ooh, we're ready. Almost time. Good evening, the time being six thirty PM. I'd like to call this meeting order. Roll call, please.
Mayor Protem Gilbert?
Here.
Councilmember Potassie?
Here.
And Mayor Barrios?
Uh, here. Please note, only three of us are here this evening. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for the invocation provided by Kent Roberts of the River Christian Community Church.
Aye. We pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, without doubt, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening.
Thank you for allowing me to pray for you tonight and with you. Let's pray together. Our Father in Heaven, holy is your name. You are Creator, you are the sustainer of everything, you are the one and only God, and we give you our love and praise. This evening, I want to give you thanks as well as to ask you for three things we all need and I certainly know I need. I want to ask you for grace, for love, and wisdom. Thank you for the grace of your promise to be with us, to lead us and guide us as we place our trust in you. I ask that you would pour out your grace upon our city leaders and upon the people of Oakdale. Thank you for your outrageous, pure, and unconditional love that satisfies the deepest longings of our heart and our soul. Please pour out your love upon our city leaders and upon the people of Oakdale. And Lord, thank you for your wisdom, wisdom that is perfect and complete, wisdom that leads to understanding. I ask that you would give our city leaders wisdom, wisdom that brings discernment, objectivity, and the heart to determine and do what is right as they seek to provide the opportunities and to meet the needs of the people who make up this community we call Oakdale. In our world and in our nation's often felt chaos and fomenting discord, we ask that you would guard and protect the hearts and minds of people everywhere, but especially the hearts and minds of our young people and children. And we ask that you would strengthen our hearts so that we might stand against the temptations to do wrong, that you might deliver us from evil. We thank you for being our God, in whom we trust, and we pray these things in the name of Jesus. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so tonight we have a presentation recognizing the Oakdale Library for its fifty years, celebrating fifty years of business here in the cowboy capital of the world. So do I have the Friends of the Oakdale Library here?
Yep, we're here.
All right, come on up to the mic, come on up. All right. So I came across this on, of course, you know, Bookface, and I thought, fifty years, I just turned fifty-one not too long ago, so it's been around that long. And I remember my mom taking my brother and I and getting us the little library card, and do you guys still offer the little card or is it something new now as times have changed or... Is it still, is it still the little library card?
Uh, it's still a little library card.
The same, same library card?
It's, uh, do I have it with me?
Wow, hi Sharon.
It's a plastic...
It's a, it's a, yes, it's no longer, sorry, I've got my, so you're gonna, you're gonna test me. See, I have my little keychain.
Oh, no, 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 the other one was like a credit card, yeah.
It, we still have those too.
Yeah. Well, anyway, uh, thank you for being here with us this evening with our city council in our city, and tell us a little bit about what you guys do there and, uh, a little bit of your history, and maybe Sharon can talk a little bit about the mural? I'd love that.
Oh, there we go. What do we do there? Oh, my gosh. How much time do we have? Oh, we do a lot of stuff at the library. It's not just books, it's, um, oh, my gosh, it's computers, it's, uh, helping people with resumes, uh, it's, uh, story time with kids, things they did today, uh, Lego Day today, it's, uh, oh, my gosh, it's so many things. Yeah.
All the creatures you guys bring there for the little kids, you guys do a ton of stuff for the kids.
Right, there's all sorts of stuff. It's the programs during summer, summer reading programs to keep kids reading when they're out of school. It's, uh, adult literacy, we do computer classes for adults all throughout the year. It's, uh, yeah, there's, there's so many, it's a, it's a... It's a... It's a community resource. See Sharon, you should be the one talking here.
I love it.
Um, yeah.
Have you been to the same location all fifty years?
Uh, it's been, yes, this, this building, this building was built in seventy-five? Oh, my gosh, come on.
Come on up Sharon, come on up.
No, it's, it's been in the current location for fifty years this year. But the first library in Oakdale goes way, way back to the late eighteen hundreds, early nineteen hundreds. And the first dedicated building for the library in Oakdale, it's on S Street. I don't know what it's current, it's a business...
Carnegie Building.
Yeah, it's, used to be the Carnegie Library. It was the Carnegie Library, which was built in, what, nineteen twelve, I believe it was. So it, it goes a little bit further back, Sharon.
Yeah, well, I didn't know that. Getting a history lesson too, right here.
That's the one I like too.
Oh, it is, oh, okay. That was B.C., before Sharon, yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, we just want to say thank you and congratulations on your fifty years. We appreciate everything you do here in our community. Love the mural, love the story, and just thank you for all the support that you not only give our youth, but our adults, and I didn't know that you help with resumes. Who, who does that?
Well, we, we help a little bit.
That's great.
We, uh, supply the computers.
Oh, wonderful.
Yes.
Well...
Resources, books, a lot, lots of resume stuff is online now, so we... Yeah, I'm a retired librarian, but you know, it's hard for me not to say we still do this stuff. But, you know, it's pointing people in the right direction, connecting them with the resource that they need to help whatever it is that they're trying to do.
Well, thank you very much, and we want to say congratulations on fifty years, and here's to another fifty years, and we're gonna come down there and get a picture with you. And look who you brought here with you this evening.
All right.
What a special treat that is. Hello, hello. Do I get to give you a hug? Good to see you. All right, you want me to, is this good here?
Yeah, come on in.
Ready? Congratulations. Okay, well, we'll talk about it. Reach out to me. Thank you, everyone, congratulations. Congratulations. So you went to the old one, Tom?
Yeah.
I mean, the older one?
Oh, yeah.
The old one, the old one. Fifty years, that's awesome.
I would just like to mention that the library functions because of our one-eighth of a penny tax dollar, and thank you for everything that you do for our community. It's a great resource for families that are in need and don't have access to Wi-Fi, books, the internet, so thank you so much to Friends of the Oakdale Library.
Thank you. All right, uh, one more, give it up. Congratulations. Thank you all for being here. All right, next item on the agenda is public comment. Um, now's the time for public comment. You will have three minutes when you come up to the mic, and please state your name and please keep it to the three minutes. I'd appreciate it. Good evening.
Hi, my name is Jeannie Marquess, um, and I just wanted to bring, uh, a community, community concern slash frustration. Um, I'm not sure how to enforce this, but I'd like to just throw it out for brainstorming. Um, one of the things that concerns me is that it's been really foggy lately, and every time I go out, um, almost nobody has lights on. They, they'll sometimes have fog lights, but not their regular lights, and that includes truck drivers, city vehicles, kind of everybody. So I just kind of wanted to throw it out there and see, is there a way to enforce that or have maybe OPD do stops or warnings to people?
I've noticed that too.
Yeah, it's just really scary, especially in the morning. I would say probably twenty to thirty percent of the people have their lights on. So just throwing it out there to have you brainstorm and see what you can do.
Thank you for bringing it up.
Thank you.
Social media post?
I've, I've seen people talk about it on social media, but I don't know that that's gonna do much to get people to actually... I mean, these are people who drive for a living and they're still not driving with their lights on, so.
Thank you, Jeannie.
Thank you.
All right, good evening, Bob.
Hello, everybody. Yeah, Bob Amaral, I'm still a resident of Oakdale. So what I want to talk about tonight, over on D Street, the city just recently removed that big flag that's been hanging there for years. Owner is Daryl Wagner. And anyway, I wrote down what I wanted to say here, but anyway, the owner of that flag, Daryl Wagner, is a friend of mine. He's a former Marine and a Vietnam veteran. Regardless of whatever ordinance that this flag may have violated being, hanging there, I believe an exception should be made for this flag. We're not talking about just any flag, this is the American flag. Mr. Wagner is a person that saw men die in Vietnam while serving for this country. Not allowing this flag to be displayed in the same manner that it, that has been the case for a number of years shines a bad light on the city of Oakdale. It's disrespectful to every person that served in the military and especially those that sacrificed their lives serving. In my opinion, anybody that has a problem with this flag being displayed in the same manner is just un-American. Uh, I went over there this morning to talk to a lot of his neighbors, and they thought the flag was great, they liked it. Uh, he has several veterans living right around him, across the street. So I just don't know, you know, comment only, but I, I would like the city, he wants to put a flag up again, and I would like that to be reconsidered. Okay? So all I got to say, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
All right.
Hi, my name is Wendy Brown, and I wrote an email on Friday. I didn't get to... Um, I am a resident, I live on D Street. I have seen the flag, I don't think it belongs on a public light, but that's a separate matter, but that's just me, I do live on the street. So, um, it was "Good afternoon in light of recent public park destruction on twelve twenty-four twenty-five by City Councilmember Jared Potassie. I would like to highlight five times OPD has posted the city ordinance stating that this behavior is not tolerated and has asked the city for help, even posting pictures of the tire tracks to find who's done it. They've also stated as recently as two four twenty-five that individuals face arrest for vandalism per city code three five two two one three nine two. It is disheartening to see a leader in the community allowed to behave poorly. I am sure it is an ongoing investigation that cannot be discussed at this time. Damages exceeding four hundred dollars are punishable as a felony. This is a small town and people talk. I think it is time for Mr. Potassie to resign from his position as a city council member. He does not take the role seriously, he rolls his eyes when others speak, he interrupts and is rude, chews and spits his nails, and sits and looks disinterested. He clearly does not have an interest in being a role model as he was asked to step down from coaching wrestling due to issues that came to light to the head coach at Ouchus recently. He needs to be held accountable for his actions, sweeping it under the rug would be ridiculous and show favoritism. He is active on social media and is very aware that he should not be causing damage to the city parks with his children in tow. He simply doesn't care. It is evident in his demeanor as he sits in the city council meetings. The rules are for the same for everyone else, same as the flag. It is the time that he resign as city council member, enough is enough. Christopher Smith was asked to resign for less, a Facebook post. Um, I've also included a post from nine ten twenty-five where he liked and acknowledged that one should gear up, follow the rules, and ride responsibly. It was from the city of Oakdale's E-Box post, and it was Jared Potassie, Oakdale City Councilman. So he's well aware, um, I don't, whatever lies will come out next is what it is, but I have a problem with lying. The police report incident number, got it for the Purple Park vandalism at two PM on Christmas Eve. While I'm at it, making friends, um, this is all available online if you would like to see his personal case that's going on. I've heard multiple times that it's done, it's over. It's actually not, mediation between Danielle and Conagra is on one twenty-six, and I think his mediation is for twenty twenty-six at one thirty PM. So it's an ongoing case, and that's fine, that's his personal business, but it's not over, so please stop saying it's over.
Anyone else for publics? Good evening.
Hi, how you doing?
Good, how are you?
My name is George Hankins. I've lived in Oakdale since, uh, two thousand or twenty seventeen. Um, I just had a curiosity on the vandalism that's been going on in the parks. I've actually been seeing it also. It's caused by the lawn mowers. I actually have pictures. It's way worse than anything I've seen in the, uh, by any dirt bike or anything like that. But just this morning, I took a picture, um, of ruts going all the way down the park. That's, uh, that's, you know, pretty bad damage. I'd imagine that's more than four hundred dollars worth of damage, but, you know, these people are the people we pay here to cut our lawns. So if Mr. Potassie's gonna be held accountable for something he did, well, I want to hold the supervisor of these guys accountable. I feel like it's only fair. You're gonna bring up something that happened that he fixed himself, and then you're gonna, well, obviously now we know who the anonymous post was on Facebook because it grew a lot of attention. And then you also want to talk about, you know, dirt bikes while we're at it. The other day, like, a fifteen-year-old kid was riding a wheelie down my road, going about forty-five miles an hour, blowing through stop signs. I don't see anybody hooting and hollering about that, so I just figured if we're gonna pick and choose who we're gonna victimize here, then might as well make it even across the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council. I am Dr. Sarah Ray Andreski. Under ordinary circumstances, I would not use my title in non-clinical settings, however, at this time, I feel it is appropriate. I am a specialist in physical medicine rehab. What that means is that I tell people they're paralyzed, they're never gonna walk again, and we're gonna cut off parts of their body. It's graphic, it's life. Sixty percent of the accidents that I have seen in my career were from bikes, motorbikes. Dirt bikes, mopeds, electric scooters, whatever the kids are riding these days. Thirty percent are diving accidents, ten percent is combat, sixty percent from recreational biking. I see kids every day. I live on Gregor Street, I've lived there for three years. I live directly in front of the park, it's my living room. I see children with no helmets, I see them driving down the highway. I drive an electric vehicle, it's quiet, they constantly cross in front of me. It's not the city council's job to parent these kids, and I understand that. My concern is from a liability perspective, there is no signage at these parks. Now, as adults, we should know better. We all make wild mistakes trying to entertain our kids on Christmas break. However, my concern is, two weeks ago, I was here for the city council meeting, we talked about signage over at the sports complex. Parking's an issue there. I agree as a spectating parent and aunt, it's a problem. I'm concerned that there's no liability protection for the city and no signage at the parks dissuading any of this behavior. It's not necessarily gonna stop the kids, but it will protect the city from liability lawsuits, things like that. I'm far more concerned with what's going to happen now than what happened at Christmas, so perhaps Mr. Potassie can help me figure out a way to make a proposal for the city council. I don't know that formal process. Mr. Remarcer, you seem to have the numbers on signage costs. Happy to speak with you at any time. I do think that it's important that we try as best as we can as a community to come around these kids. I understand they're entertaining, I'd much rather see them riding bikes than on social media, but hey. At the end of the day, keeping kids safe, keeping the roads safe, I agree with the headlight thing, that's caught me way off guard, but my bigger concern is where we go from here and how we can take what we've learned and take the taxpayer dollars and attribute them to better protections, better liability coverage. Thank you for your time, Council.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment? Good evening.
Good evening, my name's Ashley Hankins. I'm here to speak about, uh, the skate park and the things that are going on at the skate park, and maybe this will help with, uh, where the youth go, because it seems to be a common theme that our youth are running rampant in the streets, having a good time, finding other places to have fun. Um, it's been brought to my attention by many high school students that my children interact with, because I have a high schooler myself, and also a elementary student that likes to go to the skate park as well. They no longer enjoy it like they used to. My oldest daughter, who's a senior, has informed me that, that there's a lot of, uh, drug dealing and things like that going on, which has discouraged her from going to the skate park and hanging out with her friends and utilizing the basketball courts and things of that nature. So I was just hoping maybe you guys could look more into that, maybe, uh, the PD can frequent the park more, maybe discourage that type of behavior so our youth can enjoy it again for what it's for, not for what it's being used for as a hotspot for drug dealing. Thank you.
Thank you. Chief, do we still have cameras over there? Are they the two-way, um, yeah, can you talk, I don't know what they're called, but like the...
Like, uh, announcements on the speaker?
Yeah.
Does have a talk-down feature, doesn't have a listening feature.
Has a talk, not a listen?
Has a talk-down feature. You, we can't listen, but we can talk down.
Have we gotten a lot of reports on activity over there? Is there, you'll, okay, okay, thank you. Anyone else for public comment? Good evening.
Hey, Bianca Signerelli, I'm Gregor in Oakdale, um, California. And that might seem trivial to some of those other issues, but I'm gonna still come here to speak. I wanted to address the issues I encountered with both the citation process and the city's infrastructure. So I am speaking to formally express my concerns regarding a recent parking citation issued on December seventeenth, twenty twenty-five. While the fine is thirty dollars, my grievance and my concerns are a lack of transparency in the appeals process, an inconsistent signage that places residents and visitors at a disadvantage. Of note, this ticket was not mine, it was a visitor to my home for a Christmas party. So on December twenty-third, twenty twenty-five, I requested administrative review, which was denied the same day by James Murray with number three six four. My subsequent attempts to understand the ten point three UTC, which I now know is the Universal Traffic Code, um, for California, so they do have standards, and the escalation process were met with significant obstacles. City Hall and OPD staff were unable to provide a physical description of the ten point three UTC violation. The ordinance was not locatable on the city's website despite, um, an exhaustive search. During a follow-up call on January sixth, twenty twenty-six, Officer Murray was unprofessional and irate, eventually stating that decision was final and offering no further path for impartial review. I feel anybody gets a ticket should have to, I never had no face-to-face with anybody or accountability or an impartial person. Um, the sergeant of the traffic bureau is not an impartial person to a, a parking citi- citation. So, and then the other issue I have is evidence of an inadequate signage. Oh, back on the other one, I just, in other cities, you go to court or something like that. In Oakdale, I guess we only go through, back to the people that actually issued the ticket to us. I mean, it's, it's very impartial. The, um, so my second issue is with evidence of inadequate signage. The citation was issued for parking and they posted no parking area. However, the signage at this location, on Gregor, fails to meet reasonable standards of visibility and notice. Visibility under the UTC, um, so the nearest sign was approximately a hundred seventy-five feet away, and I had to try to measure with the, uh, by myself, so it's not accurate, but close, on the corner of Mustang and Gregor, where I live closer to Gregor and Albanian. So that's where the sign is, and the parking's in front, so that sign's way in back. If you look on Google, the street looks straight, it is not straight, it actually has a curve. When you stand where she parked, you cannot even see the sign, because the street light is there to block that sign. The bike lane that was there was completely obscured with piles of leaves, I'm assuming due to gutter cleaning, because the gutters were cleaned out, but all the leaves were marked.
Thank you.
Can I keep going?
Chief, do you have the email, um, from Bianca?
We responded this week.
Oh, you did, okay.
And I didn't agree with the response.
Did you, did you already talk with the chief about this?
No, but I responded back to him.
So do you guys want to take that offline and, and work with her on that?
We can.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Bianca.
Okay, I'm just asking that at minimum a sign be put at every intersection, um, so you know where the no parking is. And in my letters, I think I described exactly how many groups there are.
You did.
Okay.
Thank you for reaching out to us, appreciate it. All right, anyone else for public comment? All right, public comment is now closed. Next item on the agenda is the city council consent agenda. Would, uh, Councilmember...
I'm gonna say something, is that okay?
Sure.
Thank you. Didn't mean to interrupt you, but, uh, so everybody that heard that tonight, I did take my kids to the park and pulled them around on a little pit bike, um, for about three or four minutes. Once I realized there was damage being done, I stopped immediately, took the bike home, came back to the park, and walked the park everywhere that I rode, and I fixed all the ruts and made sure that, you know, anything that I could do, I did. I went there the following next three days and made sure that I didn't miss anything and walked the park, took the kids and played and did all that, and, uh... and walked the park, took the kids and played and did all that. And so it wasn't malicious. It wasn't intending to cause damage or anything like that. I went there to go play with the kids and give them a little fun experience like I had growing up in the country. And I realized that I shouldn't have done it. And, you know, I apologize to the people I needed to apologize to. And we all had a discussion, and it was a good discussion. And so there was no ill intent or malicious intent. If I was being malicious, then I wouldn't have stopped when I knew that I was doing damage. I would have kept doing it. But I stopped immediately, and I took accountability for it. And, you know, I think that needs to be acknowledged. I love this town. That's why I'm sitting up here. To say I don't take this job seriously, I mean, every time somebody comes up, I take notes on what they talk about, and I write down their phone number if they give it. And I reach out to them, and I make sure that they get things figured out. And, you know, you can attack me all you want. It's fine. But you know what? The situation that we're talking about right here, you can paint it whatever way you want it, but it was not with malicious intent. I went back. If I was trying to be malicious, I would have kept going when I noticed there was, I was damaging it or intentions to damage it. And then I wouldn't have went back and tried to make it right, and then talked to city staff and tried to handle it as well. So thank you for being here tonight, voicing your opinion. I respect it. But that's that on where I stand. So thank you.
All right, now it's time for the city council consent agenda. Would a council member like to make a motion or pull an item to discuss?
I motion approve the consent agenda.
I motion to approve the consent agenda.
We have a first and a second roll call, please.
Mayor Protem Gilbert.
Yes.
Councilmember Potassie.
Yes.
And Mayor Barrios.
Yes, this item passes 3-0. Thank you, Colleen. All right, now is it time for a public hearing? Next item is 10.1, a public hearing regarding the 2025 building code adoption. Before we proceed with this item, I'd like to note for the record that two of the five council members are not here this evening. And given the importance of this public hearing, and to ensure that the full council has the opportunity to hear the public testimony and participate in deliberations, it's appropriate to continue this to the February 2 council meeting. But first, we will open the public hearing for public comments. And the public hearing is now open. Anybody wishing to speak, please come up to the mic. And please do state your name and use three minutes, please. Okay, seeing none, public hearing is now closed. I would like to motion to continue this until February 2.
I second that motion.
First and a second, sorry, first and a second roll call, please.
Mayor Barrios.
Yes. I never do that.
I know. Mayor Protem Gilbert.
Yes.
And Councilmember Potassie.
Yes.
Good. And thank you for allowing that. Appreciate it. Okay, staff reports. Talking about buying a new Mach-E from our local retailer and for our police department.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
Councilmembers. Tonight, I'm asking for a purchase of a 2025 Ford Mach-E and outfitting that vehicle with equipment. So tonight's consideration of a resolution authorizing staff to purchase a 2025 Ford Mach-E from Hayland Ford, which is a local Ford dealer, for $40,753.74, and outfit the vehicle with emergency equipment installed by Jay's Tires for $7,997.68, for a total amount of $48,751.42, using funds from the supplemental law enforcement fund 203, and then surplusing vehicle 43. So vehicle 433 is a 2015 Chevy Impala with almost 92,000 miles now. Frequently, it's out of service for repairs. It has declining interior condition, and it's just reached the end of its dependable service life. It's hard to see in the pictures, but the seats and the interior is pretty worn out, broken down, and the car just doesn't ride very well anymore. The one we're asking to purchase is a 2025 Ford Mach-E. It has a estimated range on the battery of 260 miles. It's a full electric motor with a rear-wheel drive and has an eight-year warranty. What we found so far in the last couple of years of having EVs is that electric vehicles have proven to be less expensive to operate, and at the same time, they're exceptionally reliable. With the purchase of tonight's vehicle, this will be the police department's sixth electric vehicle in our fleet, but it's our first non-patrol vehicle that would be electric. Fiscal impact, the cost of replacing vehicle 433 is $40,753.74, and then outfitting with emergency equipment is $7,997.68, for a total of $48,751.42. The purchase will be made with existing funds in the supplemental law enforcement fund 203, and I want to make note that there will be no impact on the general fund. The highest year of fuel costs for the PD was $115,452. Last year, with five electrical vehicles, we spent $38,969, which is a savings of over 76,000 miles. So this will, this electric vehicle will add to that savings as well on top of that. So my recommendation tonight is that staff recommends the city council adopt the resolution authorizing staff to purchase a 2025 Ford Mach-E from Hayland Ford for $40,753.74, and then outfit the vehicle with emergency vehicle equipment installed by Jay's Tires for $7,997.68, for a total of $48,751.42, using funds from the supplemental law enforcement fund 203, and then surplusing vehicle 433. With that, I'll take some questions.
All right, any comments from the public for chief? Any questions from city council?
Yes. I'm so sorry, chief, but I'm a cheapskate. And my car right now is a 2015 Honda, and I have 142,000 miles on it. So who is driving this car? How often are they driving this car? And how much gas are we putting in this car weekly? I know that you, in the slide, it said that we're going to be saving, we have saved $34,000 switching to the electric vehicles, but this vehicle's not old. So I'm just trying, sorry.
Sure. So vehicle replacement is, for us at the police department, is real strategy. We try to time it to where when we sell the car, we're still able to get a little bit of value back from it. But at the same time, we want to make sure that the car is dependable for us. The car, to answer your first question, is assigned to our detective unit, and so they use it Monday through Friday on cases, going out interviewing, coming back, going out picking up evidence, going out to crime scenes, back and forth, going into Modesto to court. It's also used upon occasion to go to traffic school, or sorry, any schools that the officers go to, trainings. That's primarily the use of that car.
The vehicle's also equipped for emergency use. It seems like we're trying to compare, like, my personal vehicle and its reliability, and compare that to what a police officer is going to have. We can't compare those. We, the police department, for public safety, has to have the most dependable fleet, cars in the fleet that we can possibly get. I've driven the white Malibu. It's junk. It's, it is falling apart. The headlamps didn't work for four months. They couldn't figure out how to get those. I wouldn't trust, from a civilian point of view and knowing how law enforcement needs to respond, I wouldn't trust that car to get somewhere when an officer absolutely needs to get there, and that's why we need to replace it.
Safe for our officers. Okay, any questions?
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, this is an action item.
First. Motion to...
I second that.
We have a first and a second roll call, please. I mean, there's only three of us.
I don't want to do the first, they need the second.
Councilmember Potassie.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Gilbert.
Yes.
And Mayor Barrios.
Yes, thank you. This item passes 3-0. All right, item 12. Anything else, city manager, to add to your reports?
I would just like to comment on the flag issue. I drive D Street nearly every day, and it is a sense of pride to see that flag flying. Unfortunately, it was posted on one of our light poles, which is not allowed by city code, and could eventually, could be considered a safety issue for that. I did have a conversation with Mr. Wagner. I encouraged him to go through the process of getting a flag pole, so that he can get a permit, get it permitted, get it up there the proper way, so that he can fly that flag, so I can drive by it proudly every day.
He's actually, there's a business in Oakdale that's already working on it and getting funds for that.
I think they started a GoFundMe for him also.
Yeah, they did.
I would like to see that flag back up.
Yeah.
In the proper manner.
Right. And thank you for that explanation, too. All right, anybody else? Councilmember Hugnayda? Mayor State of the City, January 28, 11 o'clock at the Community Center. Tickets are still available, or you can just show up if you don't want to have lunch. And I will not be here at the next meeting. I'll be out of state for work. So you guys have a good time, and I'll see you the second meeting in February. Meeting adjourned.